Okay, 6:02, let's begin the Brattleboro Planning Commission meeting of March 4th. Okay, we've got last meeting's minutes to review and accept.
I did read them, but I wasn't here last meeting. I don't recall. Is that, am I able to vote or no?
Yeah, you are.
Okay, well, that's good then.
Okay. Seeing, okay, John Moose accepts, Lindsay seconds. Last chance for corrections. Seeing none? All in favor? Please raise your hand. That's all four of us, I see. Okay, announcements. Todd Murchison resigned February 19th. So, yeah, and he just wanted to pass along that, what did I jot it down? Yeah, just to express appreciation to commissioners for their time they give to the community and staff for the great work they do for the community, so. So, yeah, now public watching, we have two vacancies and it'd really be great to get them filled. You can see what's on our agenda now, you can see what's been on it in the past, but we're going to be considering the town plan probably later at some point this year, and that's, you know, a kind of big document that guides a lot of policy and projects and regulations in the town. And it talks about everything from art to economy to housing to natural resources and more topics, so. And then plenty of other things within planning commission's purview we can also deal with, so. Look, please apply if you're interested. Any other announcements? Sue?
I guess I would just announce, I mean, we've talked about it here at a past meeting, I am going to get together a committee to work on the Connecticut River Dam relicensing.
Oh, great.
So I will be in touch if it gets Lindsay and John, if you're interested.
I think I was interested too.
Okay, sorry. I have my notes in front of me.
Okay, okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, let's move on to the bike parking standards. I wrote a memo, one pager for this. We've had several meetings on this topic and abandoned things around a bit, seen the proposals and arguments from local motion and staff's perspective and heard our own and from some members of the public and we've had a document or two done in the past, plans like the walk bike plan, which has informed this topic a bit too. Although that focused more on like the road infrastructure more so than bike storage, but it had a little bit there. So, I really, from hearing what commissioners were saying in like the last meeting and also feeling like, you know, now's the time to really just decide how we want to move forward with this, or not at all. I kind of broke it down, the topic into five different pieces and just kind of proposed binary questions or questions that call for binary answers. But then, of course, we can be more specific or debate are the way we vote with those. The way I'm proposing is that is that with each of those questions, we, and it says at the bottom of the memo, but I'll just rephrase it here, is that, you know, we ask and and clarify whatever needs that we need to, to be clear on the question, or modify the question if you feel like, you know, didn't write it as optimally as it could be. And then we vote and then if people feel that they don't like how the vote turned out and they want to try to persuade others, there's nothing, there's nothing stopping us from doing a revote. So we could then argue our piece, our perspective, and then call for a revote. But then I think if the way we vote calls for work to continue in that realm, then we need to give staff, maybe it would be helpful to give more specific direction, more so than just the, you know, the yay or nay vote to the question. So, yeah. So how about, is there any questions or thoughts before I move on to them, one at a time?
No, actually, I think that's great to sort of get it on the table and let's make a decision.
Okay. It's, I think it only really dawned on me to, you know, this sort of way of breaking up the thing into four or five different pieces. And then in looking at what our current regs have, I feel like we already have short-term bike parking, but it's kind of minimal. We already have long-term bike parking, we already have bike rack performance standards, we already have site design standards, but they're not, you know, really big.
Tom, can I ask a general question?
What's that?
Can I ask a general question?
Sure.
So, for instance, you know, in sort of the bullet points that you laid out, you said, you know, hold on, I have it right for me.
I'm sure the first one's pretty similar.
Yeah, for instance, like should different or increased short-term bike parking standards replace or be added to? So, for instance, with the short-term biking standards, it's typically within 200 feet, one rack.
Yeah.
Like, in your opinion, what would that look like if it was increased? Or is that something that the planning staff would decide if we decided to increase it?
I think if we're going to proceed with this with how I proposed at the bottom of the memo, then I guess I would say I just limit my clarification of that right now to say that we saw proposals, or we saw a proposal and then staff's kind of re, you know, revision for our consideration. And, you know, it had things like the ratios based on uses and a big table, kind of like how our current auto minimum parking is and matches. So that could be one way, that could motivate people to vote, you know, yes or no, but maybe people have in mind a whole different, commissioners have in mind a whole different way of doing it too, that's different or increased than what we have. The thing, the wrench that could be thrown in the gears here is that maybe people feel the current short-term biking parking that we have works as for major site plan and those five districts of one bike rack is required. Maybe they feel like, someone feels like that's too much. And in which case, I think the way I structured the question doesn't have an option for that. But one could say, one could vote, if they felt that way, they could vote no for this question. And then after we vote, explain, you know, why they voted no. I guess we could move that way. Or similarly, if they vote yes, then they could say, I liked, for example, what local motion proposed.
You want us to vote, indicate our direction, and then you wanted us to all explain why we liked that?
Yeah.
So that kind of gets to what Sarah's question was. Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Yeah, I think we just go for it because we've talked about this a lot, so, in past meetings. So how about we just start with the first one? Should difference or increased short-term bike parking standards replace or be added to the current standards?
Could you just summarize the current standards?
There's five districts where if a development requires major site plan approval, then a bike rack is required within 200 feet.
No matter how, no matter how many units there are, anything like that, it's a bike rack.
Yeah, and for non-residential major site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
And one rack can conserve many buildings if it's within 200 feet, I think, is how I read that.
Right, yeah. So Steve has his hand up too.
Yeah, just to clarify, I believe it's that each non-residential entrance
Yeah.
for a project needs to have a rack.
Oh, okay.
So that could be substantially more than one, although I don't know how common it is to have the many entrances, but that is, I think that's written in those five districts.
Okay, okay. Yeah, the districts are like, I don't have them, well, I do. The urban center, the village center, the service center, the neighborhood center, and the waterfront.
My position is to increase.
Okay.
In all.
John?
I support having a standard. Maybe I missed something, or we've had a lot of discussions on this and so maybe I missed something, but is there a recommendation based on some sort of best practice as to what a standard should be for short-term parking?
Well, what the proposal
I mean, I have no idea whether one bike rack per, you know, development is satisfactory, but I'm assuming somebody has done some research on this. I definitely think there should be a standard.
Yeah. And, I mean, I guess you could argue what we have now is a standard, it's just, you know, based off the past meetings of the desire for making, make bicycling more, you know, the infrastructure more amenable. There was apparently local motion produced some of those ratios based off, what was it, the American bicycle?
So in the interest of moving this along, because I think that's the most important thing, I vote for either adequate or more. A higher standard is what you voted for, right? Was a higher standard, yeah. So I'm either, I'm good with either one, I just don't, I just don't agree with no standard.
So I think it's yes to question one, for John.
It is?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Sarah?
Yeah, I mean, I kind of, I feel like I could go either way. I was actually leaning towards now, I think the standards that we have seem adequate, but I am willing to be swayed.
Oh, yeah, I should have said too, that in full disclosure, that we need all four people to vote in the affirmative for any motion in order for it to be in effect. So that's all four of us here, if we want that to happen. So.
What was your position?
Right, mine, I'm in favor, I'm in favor of it. So Sarah, could you, do you want us to have to argue our points a bit more to get you off the fence, or were you saying yes?
I actually, and I apologize if planning staff have already shared their opinion, but I would like to hear, you know, in a very short, if possible, you know, I'm sure you've already expressed this, but I'm just curious from your perspective if you feel like increasing the standards would be detrimental, I don't know if that's the, that's too strong a word, to development, but.
So there is some research, Steve can speak to it if you want us to, but that indicates that it can be detrimental, I think local motion had said that what they did out in Portland, Oregon was pretty aggressive, so, you know, generally, we're not in favor of it, we think that what we have is working, but we can, we're okay, you know, looking and trying to right-size it for Brattleboro. However, you know, as we talk about moving away from car parking, it seems weird to be requiring bicycle parking.
Yeah, I think the, we've certainly had plenty of conversation about it, but I think it's, there are other ways to achieve the goal of more bike parking, or even just more generally, having more bike accessibility and being more bike-friendly as a community that don't involve this particular policy tool, which I think we are of the opinion that it's a pretty blunt object and it's pretty bad economically.
It doesn't change my opinion. I still think that we should increase it.
I guess, Sarah, if you're still on the fence, then I'll say why I voted yes. I, I agree that, you know, it does feel like Sue said, it's, seems a little odd or, you know, counterproductive or something that we're talking about, we have been talking about seemingly in agreement about reducing automobile minimums, parking minimums. One reason being that it's an added cost that is sometimes unnecessary or over-necessary. But the reason that I feel, and this is kind of like a minor version of car parking, but now requiring it if we go forward with this. But there's thoughts that I have that justify that, which is, you know, thinking environmentally and with climate change, and this is a much lighter detrimental impact mode of transportation. And the automobile industry, your way of life, has been supported for so much longer that it's not like they're on equal playing fields, so it'd be good to give the bicycling, the human-powered modes a boost. And it supports, you know, in some cases, low-income ways of getting around. And then also, I would be more specific in saying that what I think is not great about our current standards is that it's just one, it doesn't take into account the type of use. So it could be a gas station, or it could be a college, or it could be, you know, a 40-unit residential building. But in all cases, it's just one bicycle rack within 200 feet per entrance of a non-residential use, so wouldn't even apply to that 40 or 60-unit residential apartment building. Yeah, so I feel like it should be better tailored to specific uses.
I guess my one concern is, and maybe this would be addressed if we happened to all vote yes, this would be addressed later, but like, say we all, you know, want to move forward with this, you know, increasing the standard could mean two bike racks, it could mean 10 bike racks, and I think
Yeah.
understandings aren't what that scale is, I could see like, sure, if we wanted to require two bike racks, that seems like not a heavy lift. But if increasing means, oh, well, there has to be 10 bike racks, then like, that seems a little bit less achievable, I guess.
Well, I was hoping
Depending on scale of that would be helpful.
That isn't what we're deciding tonight though, right?
That's not what we're deciding.
We're just giving direction to staff about
Yeah.
like increasing, staying the same, or not doing it.
Yeah, but then also I hope that, like the comment I just gave, of my own personal thoughts of that I think they should be tailored to the use. I'd like to hear if the other commissioners have specifics, feelings like that too, then that would give even more direction, more specific direction to staff. But still, then in the future, if, especially since we only have, you know, often four people showing up to a meeting, you know, any one person can, can just block that, you know, if they see, oh, you know, the three of the four want, you know, 15 racks for that huge apartment building, but I only feel like we should have two, then, you know, you could block that.
I want it to be increased because I want there to be a more visible presence for bikes. I would think that when people see bike racks, it makes them think about biking, and it makes that seem achievable to go to that place. So that's why I'm suggesting more. And I think, like you said, for the environmental and climate change reasons, that's the direction that we need to go. For the sustainability of Brattleboro, that, that's what we need to encourage.
Sarah, do you need anything else before?
So if we were to all say yes, then we would, the planning staff would come back at a later date and sort of suggest what that increase would be. Or could be, is that right, Sue?
Yes.
Okay, sure, I will change my vote to yes then.
Okay, hearing all four being yeses, does anybody want to argue a revote? No? Okay, moving on to the next, similarly structured. Should different slash increased long-term bike parking standards replace or be added to the current standard? And that current standard basically applied. Which one is that? Is that the, did I pull that from the single-room occupancy one? Yeah, so I read that and I was like, oh, I think that's, I think that's long-term bike parking, and that's the only place where it exists in our current standards, which it said something like there needs to be indoor bike storage for however many units, or just, yeah, is that what it said?
I'm not even sure it was indoor, is it indoor?
One, one secure space for every two units.
Secure, okay.
Yep.
And just for single-room occupancies. So I guess the thinking there that, you know, that we talked about a year or two or three ago, whenever it was, or maybe it was already in the SRO regs before that.
I can't remember, I think it must have been in there before, I think we talked about getting rid of it, because it was one of those external costs, right?
Add a cost, right. But it's probably put in there originally because the thinking is, oh, this is typically a very budget or low-income type of living and bicycling is a way of transporting, that's more low-income than cars.
For increasing this one, are we referring just to single resident occupancies, or are we saying increasing long-term for residential uses?
It could be for anything that the Land use regs has purview over, yeah.
Well, the local motion presented actually was also long-term for employees, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I was in, I'm in favor of increasing that as well. Long-term storage. I know from my own personal experience, it made a big difference being able to have secure parking for my bike when I was riding to and from work, so.
But doesn't the, doesn't the regs support secure parking for bikes? Only for SROs, only residential.
Only for SROs.
That's the only places.
Only a very specific type of residential, yeah, the SRO.
The only thing that could maybe be argued as long, no, I won't even say it, it's in another, the site design section.
Okay, so if I vote no, that means that I think we should use the existing reg?
Just, yeah, just keep what we have, don't, don't expand it, don't add more.
Okay. Recall for a vote.
That's actually, what'd you say?
I said I'm going to recall for a vote.
Oh, well, let's just go around, yeah, let's hear, was that what you said?
So, so it doesn't sound intuitive to me, but I would vote yes because I agree with the fact that there should be secure bike parking for commercial use for commuters. That doesn't mean, and the reason I keep getting confused is because that doesn't mean that I want somebody to have to put showers in. You know what I'm saying?
I don't think
Well, no, I mean, I'm voting strictly based on the question, which is, I'm voting yes. But I'm clarifying my yes to.
Because you see, you see some specific way that you'd like to expand it.
I think you made a great point, I think there needs to be long-term bike parking for bike commuters. But it doesn't need to be showers, it doesn't need to be, you know, 24-hour guard, it doesn't need any of those silly things, it could be just a secure location.
Yeah.
What about for residential buildings? Secure parking?
Well, no, I would agree with that as well.
Yeah.
Remember the picture you had up there when I was in Providence before coming here, we had one of those, and it was like, it wasn't even wasn't even something that registered to me, right, it was just something you do. And to your point, I think most developers who are going to modernize their buildings probably would put that in there because they understand that people want secure holders for their bikes. I'm not even sure it needed to be regged. But nevertheless, it's probably good to reg it just in case somebody wants to chance.
In the, in the case for me
The answer to your question is yes.
For me, I feel like for this question, much more so than the short term, I feel even more aware or sympathetic, whatever the word is, of like the added cost that we'd be adding. So although I'm also going to vote yes, I would not in the future, when we work, if we work on this, depending on Sarah's vote, I won't want it as as required for all sorts of uses as I would the short term. I'd like, personally, my opinion is that because it is a much more significant added cost in the time we're in, the cost of housing and such, and that we would just want to be, I would just want to be very targeted and find like the the most important couple or few uses that that, that this would most be needed and, and then move forward with that. But that's enough to, as a structure is, you know, as a question of structure, to vote yes for me, so. Sarah?
Sue or Steve, are you seeing in any renovation or new development that people are, developers are adding this long-term storage without being asked? I don't know if there's many examples happening.
We said
Did we have it on Flat Street?
On the Flat Street, but we actually haven't, it's in the basement, so we haven't confirmed that it was built.
And I think that raises a point that came up in the, in the past meeting that probably bears repeating as well, that there's a little bit of difficulty in really guaranteeing that it gets built out. As with anything that's internal to a building, we don't do local building code. So it really could just not happen, or, you know, if we, if we guarantee that it happens when it's built out, there's nothing to say that that couldn't get removed and changed to something else inside the building, even right after.
So does that mean that it's complaint-driven? Like a resident could say, I saw in your permit that there's supposed to be parking and there isn't?
It could be complaint-driven.
Does it need to be by someone who uses the building? Or if I take a tour of a building, I mean, it's just, it's shocking to me that that's not. And what's the point of a permit? If people, if there's no mechanism for enforcing them doing it?
For certain buildings, we'll issue a certificate of compliance or completion, that they'll need that for their, you know, banking or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just what happens to it after the fact, like we don't go in and inspect annually or anything like that.
Well, yeah, I wouldn't expect annually, but initially, I mean, like if you have a big apartment building, you're getting something that says that you completed everything in your permit?
More or less on the outside is what we deal with. Anything building code-wise would be the state fills that rule.
But do they come and do that?
Well, so this was not required, they proposed it, right? It was, you know, we saw it because it was on their internal plans, but it wasn't conditioned in any way, so if they didn't, if they chose not to build it, we wouldn't, we wouldn't hold them to that.
This is shocking to me, I don't know how to process this, because I don't, what is the point then? Of having the permit and laying out what someone is supposed to do if they just get to ignore it later on? How can we as a town not have a mechanism? Do we not have a mechanism for enforcing this because we're in Vermont and so we're not legally allowed to? Or do we as a town just not have a mechanism for enforcing it?
Well, we try not to do too much internal regulation for this reason, so, I mean, if this was a regulation that that ended up getting adopted, we'd have to be better about it, we'd have to make it be part of the certificate of completion. Yeah. But with that SNL one, like we don't, we actually don't know if we built it, they built it, because it wasn't required and so.
That was sort of the driving factor between, for a lot of things being removed from the SRO and the rooming and boarding house, when, when those were being revised recently, was that we really don't have any mechanism for regulating what's going on on the inside. When it comes to site plan standards, major site plan review outside the building, we of course have zoning enforcement, and you can't just shirk those responsibilities.
I told you, I guess I've got the question now, I'm assuming they have to get a certificate of occupancy. And somebody comes in, before they provide them a certificate of occupancy, they review everything that is standard, right?
Yeah, but Steve mentioned early on that, that after that, the certificate of occupancy is, is signed off and given to them, they could alter the long-term bike parking inside code. Yeah.
But I mean, that happens, that could happen anyplace, right? You're not going to have people regularly going in. Now, I assume that somebody, you know, if they're very upset about the fact that the bike, secure bike storage has been altered, is going to say, geez, you know, this was altered, and they turn it into wherever the hotline is for violations, and somebody comes out, looks at it. I don't think any town though has a continuing mechanism to regularly check to make sure you check into certificate of occupancy and then you rely on people to complain if there's a problem. That's my experience at least.
So when you say we don't have a mechanism, I don't understand what that means. You mean we don't have a staff person, or you mean we don't have the legal ability to do those types of things?
We, we don't have local building codes, so there's just no
But that's not building code, that would, that would be the permit. It's not building code. It's not building code. I mean, you could have an permit that you need to put in a rain garden, for example, and someone would go and check and make sure that the rain garden is in place, that there's no building inspector involved. So who does that?
The zoning administrator does a certificate of completion, is what we call it. We don't call it a certificate of occupancy because he's not doing building code-type inspections, which is implied with a CO. So it's a certificate of completion. And he's checking things that are conditional on the permit, so.
So if the bike room was conditional, then he would check for that?
So let me ask you a question then, so, I'm kinda interested in this one, actually. So if if there is secure bike parking at the certificate of completion, and it's later changed, for whatever bizarre reason it might be changed, and a resident complains, is there a mechanism for that complaint to go to inspection potentially to some sort of review? Or some sort of legal enforcement?
We'll take the complaint, we'll investigate it, it's, you know, we can't necessarily get on somebody's property if they're not, or in their building if they're not letting us, so. There's only so far it can go.
If they were to be issued a violation for that and appeal that, it would go to environmental court, and they might not have to, they might be found in favor of and not have to do that if they are able to prove that case. I think oftentimes, the process takes a really long time and is not exactly predictable when it goes to that level.
But that seems to be, again, I'm asking this question, that's a Vermont problem, right? Not a Brattleboro problem? Or is that a Brattleboro problem? Or do other towns in Vermont have a better mechanism for handling? You know, I promised to secure bike parking and I changed it and somebody complained?
For zoning enforcement, that's just statewide. That's sort of how statute works in that regard.
Some towns do have building code. I don't know how it works here in Vermont, because we've not had building code.
Okay.
When I worked in New Hampshire, building code enforcement was a lot easier.
Okay. So in other words, I guess my point in asking that was, now at least I believe it's not something necessarily we can fix in the planning commission, because it's a Vermont-wide issue.
Yeah.
You can certainly complain, somebody review it, whether or not it gets, anything gets done is a different issue, as I understand it.
We heard yeses from the three of us at the table, right? Sarah, you're up. Or we can each give more specifics about why we voted the way we did, before you're up, you're having trouble?
I, yeah, I'm on the fence again. I think I definitely, it's a, try to consider, you know, making it easier for developers to develop. I wouldn't necessarily like say increasing the standard is gonna turn a project from a green light to a red light necessarily. You know, Tom, I think I agree, you know, somewhat with your comments about, you know, if we are, if this is to move forward, the increase would be for like specific uses, not sort of like townwide or, you know, use-wide. I wonder, I guess here's a process question, so similar with the first one we voted on, and this one, we vote yes, planning staff, you know, puts together sort of what their suggestions would be. Could we then say, no, actually, this doesn't fit what we were thinking, and sort of abandon it altogether? Right? Okay. Okay. Yeah, I guess I would vote yes to just, in a way, be interested in what that would look like.
Hey, you really crystallized this for me. Since we can just vote later to abandon everything, let's just, let's just vote, let's just vote the slate and vote yes, huh?
Well, I don't, you know, let's not create undue tasks. But yeah, you know, I think it's, there's an interest in seeing what it would look like, but then not being held to like, okay, since we voted yes, then we just have to like move forward, even if we think whatever the staff put together maybe is not what we were thinking initially when we voted yes, if that makes sense.
Yeah, so for me, a little more specifics, I remember when I asked Jonathan, like, for the long-term bike parking, and when there was some more skepticism about that maybe than short-term back then, I said, hey, so what Jonathan do you think are like the three most top types of land uses that would most greatly, in your opinion, require or benefit from long-term bike parking? And I wrote it down somewhere, I forget, I forgot what he wrote, but I think one of them is like large apartment buildings, maybe education facilities was another, and I don't know, maybe like big employee places. But then location might matter too. Although, you know, we don't have many of either of those three things out on dirt roads in rural areas, so that's already kind of self, self-pleased or something, but.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's all to figure out later.
Yeah, no, I can definitely see like larger apartment buildings, snow block has a storage too.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can see it being beneficial in those specific areas, where there's a high concentration of people that might be on bike.
Yeah. So any more just tailoring of, or specific reason why people voted that way, to give some just high-level direction to staff now?
Nope.
We didn't, I think part of this actually should be like a consideration of the amenities, just to have a formal vote or opinion on that. I think maybe we kind of already.
I think.
All expressed our opinions?
Yeah.
Yeah. The majority of us said that that's just, that's just too much to require right now. If anyone disagrees, huh?
Shower would be like a remedy.
Shower, locker room, whatever the third one was. Okay. Moving on to the next question is about the performance standards.
I know we're talking about like the type of rack.
The type of rack, the design of the rack, maybe, maybe material was in there, I'm not sure. Not the location yet, that's for site design. So should different slash increased bike rack performance standards replace or be added to the current definition?
Yes.
And the current definition has a little bit, it says like it needs to have, the bikes need to be lockable to it, you know? It says another thing or two, I don't have it memorized, but. And then we saw examples proposed by local motion, and that staff kind of modified a bit for review.
Yes, I like the examples from local motion. The bike rack should be sufficient for locking bikes to them so that they don't get stolen, and so that they can be used by the correct number of people. And it sounded like our standard was currently probably deficient, given best practices in the field, so we should move with the times and have the right standard.
Okay. Yes, John? Okay. Sarah?
Um, I'm gonna vote no. I feel like it is sufficient, and it doesn't limit people from making it better, or making it over the top, if you will. Yeah.
I'm gonna vote yes. And my reasons are that I recall the diagram and description that local motion provided, and it showed a few types of racks that they were best practiced by some, you know, organization or something deemed to be you know, secure and reasonably easy for bikes to be locked to and stay standing, and then there was on the bottom of the diagram, there were several examples that were just, you know, difficult to use, or kind of a waste of space, or not so secure for bicycles. And I remember, you know, being a bicyclist sometimes myself, I remember looking at some of those racks and thinking, yeah, some of those are not very good, and bikes just kind of roll off them or don't stay standing very well, and and I think there was more to the justification of those standards that I'm not recalling, but at the time, it all, it all made sense to me.
Are you concerned about the cost, Sarah, of changing this? What's the reason to not have it match what they said are the better kinds of racks?
Um, well, I guess I'm, I must have missed that part of the presentation. You said it was with local motion was the one who presented on that?
Yeah, they showed some diagrams of different types of racks and the best types to use.
Is something gonna be called up on the screen pretty quickly? No? Okay.
Do you feel like what is in our standards now does not?
They said that it wasn't good. I believe that, I believe that at least one of our pictures showed up in there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I just preface really quickly and say, this is actually one of the, one of the things that staff already gave their recommendations to, so.
That's what I was gonna say, we were not opposed to this. In fact, if you look at this building and the library, we've got bike racks that are on the, they're not really secure for, for the bikes, because they only, I think there's like one touch point on the wheel or whatever. So the library's got the cutesy bike-looking thing, and we've got what they call the wheel bender or something like that.
Staino masher.
Yeah, so it was one area that we thought we could give some improvement to, actually. We were okay with.
And I've heard other industry professionals that I'm familiar with mention those very same designs as being an issue. So I think this is a widespread belief among that profession.
They feel what we have in our standards currently.
Or that we're not restricting types that are arguably deficient?
Yeah, either because they can damage the frame, or they're not providing enough security to a bicycle. So we allow those kind of things. If we tightened this up, we'd be more specific about the types of bike racks, like local motion.
And I think this isn't a case where it really substantially increased costs either, it's just a different type of rack in both cases, unless someone pulls it from a junkyard, right, or welds it themselves, or, well, in which case they could weld a better one too. But they, it's just making a different choice for design.
And you feel the ones that are, you, the ones around town are sort of the bare minimum of what's in our standards?
Some of them are. Some are, some that are around town, like the U shape or the upside, whatever they, I don't know what they call them. Those are, you know, those I think are up to standard.
Um, okay, yeah, I guess I will change my vote to yes then.
So anyone else at the table changing their vote from the yeses that we heard?
I think that was yes, right?
Yeah, okay, so that's four yeses for that one. Moving on, should different slash increased bike rack site design standards replace or be added to the current standard? And the current standard just basically kind of reiterates that, I think, that 200 feet from an entrance?
Within 200.
Within 100, yeah, within, thank you, 200 feet from the entrance, that's kind of mirrored in our current, you know, of the first question I addressed. And similarly to the performance standards, we saw a proposed by local motion diagrams and descriptions of locating it and where, you know, how far off a wall, or how far from a sidewalk, how far from an entrance, things like that.
I'm interested in the site design standards being improved. I'm specifically interested in bikes being covered. Not in every situation, not in every location, but I'm interested in locations where perhaps people are traveling to and from during the day, like places of employment maybe, or places where people might shop especially. I don't know exactly what that would look like, but that's what I'm most interested in, is seeing more covered bicycle parking. I think it's a big deterrent. We don't live in Southern California, so it's not sunny every day. That's my.
I think the current standards say covered when feasible.
Yeah, encouraged or when feasible.
But you would prefer, you would prefer that to be more stringent?
I would prefer that there be situations where it was not an option but was required, yeah. Not, I mean, I don't expect everything to be covered, but I would like to see more of that, yes.
I'm gonna vote yes for this one as well. To me, the, just 200, within 200 feet, and that's it, just does not seem sufficient or, you know, tailored to different uses, or just flat out close enough to most entrances. And in a lot of cases, car parking, some of it would be much closer than that. And as far as the roof covering, I don't know how I feel about that, it'd be nice, but it would also have to be considered if we move forward with some long-term bike parking, maybe that would remedy or address that in certain cases, so. Regardless whether we move forward with making required the currently optional covered bike parking or not, I wanna see the improved site design standards, at least similar to how they were proposed to us, so yes for me.
Yes.
Sarah? This may have been proposed at the same meeting, this may have been presented at the same meeting that the performance.
Yeah. I guess what came to mind was just how small lot sizes could be, and even though there is sort of that within 200 feet, I mean, I'm making an assumption, but I feel like maybe oftentimes it's a lot closer, just based on, I don't, Sue or Steve can definitely correct me if I'm wrong, but Tom, were you thinking you would prefer it to be a lot closer, like less than 200 feet?
Yeah, well, in certain cases, if they were, if developers or development was to choose to just put them at the absolute maximum at 200 feet, it would just sometimes look like the bicyclists are being relegated as like second-class citizens, because like the whole parking lot can, in certain cases, can be 200 feet wide, let's say, or deep. So then, imagine if bicyclists have to park, you know, on a rack in the, close to the road, and then they have to walk across the car parking lot to actually get to the entrance. Meanwhile, a bunch of cars, this is just one imagined scenario that maybe we could find or not, but I think I remember when the site design standards, I mean, staff kind of revised those a bit, or put them into, not necessarily your own words, but kind of your own format, and maybe you guys can, you have a better memory-recall of some of the good qualities that you felt about that.
Yeah, I don't believe we had any particular issues with them. I think there was a desire to just scan the existing standards of other communities around the country, the world, what have you, or other potential industry recommendations to make sure that those were not unusual, but nothing seemed particularly out of what we would consider reasonable.
Yeah, maybe in some cases, people who don't bicycle but are installing the bicycle rack might put it too close to some things, not realizing like the space needed to turn around, or, you know, especially if the rack gets filled with bikes. You know?
I think that was something that they showed in their infographic, that that might not occur to folks, and that's a good point to include. But I don't think that there's any real incentive to put something 200 feet away just for the sake of it.
Sure, yeah.
Although it's, you know, if we think that it should be closer to an entrance, then it seems like it's reasonable to just. then it seems like it's reasonable to just move that number lower so that it's guaranteed.
That could be one option, yeah. And I don't know if like the one more example that comes to mind is maybe the site design standards that were proposed said something about like curbs. You know, in some cases, people put a bike rack on a sidewalk-y area and there's a curb and they don't make a, a ramp or cut out in the curb. I don't know, that could be one little element. Some people have heavy bicycles, right, because they're carrying cargo and electric batteries and things, so. That can be one of the, I think the site design standards, you know, had all sorts of numbers and dimensions, maybe, maybe 20 or 30. But, you know, this, that maybe was one little element of it.
Okay, um, yeah, I'll, I'll vote yes.
Okay, so that's all four of us, yeses?
Yep.
Okay, last question. This is just, it seemed to make sense just to write this just for short-term bike parking. Um, so should short-term bike parking in the urban center district be the responsibility of the town instead of private property owners? And this would mean that the land use and development regs would not require development in the urban center to provide short-term bike parking. Would not require non-governmental, non-town government.
Urban center is mainstream.
Downtown, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the kind of reasoning or precedent here is that, um, I guess maybe similarly to why it, um, however many years ago, 2015 for our current land use regs, the urban center was made an exception for a report.
Oh, that happened in the 90s.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
It's maybe early 2000s, late 90s.
So in the urban center district, the town, um, government is already the one solely responsible for, um, being required to have automobile parking? Or to figure that out, or to think about how to meet capacity? Is that phrase correct?
Parcels can't create new, um, um, new off-street parking. So those who had parking before that day could keep it, but you can't create any new parking unless the municipality can do it.
So is it?
So that may not be a perfect analog for this, but. I was saying that may not be a perfect analog for this because we're not necessarily banning, we're not considering in this question banning private development in the urban center from creating bike parking. It's just saying and proposing for us to vote on if, um, you know how in the first question, we considered expanding it because the current, um, urban center and village center and those three other districts requires a bike rack, a major site plan in the urban center? This, if we were to vote yes on this, it would actually, uh, if we, if we voted no on the first question, but we vote yes on this, then the result would be that it would strike that requirement in the urban center district. Because that was a requirement on private development, but we would be saying with this question, no, the town government should figure it out in the downtown district.
I'm okay with the town government figuring it out in the downtown district.
I have a question, actually.
Yeah.
So, um, if the town government owns it, do, do you use an easement process to gain the lands you need for, you know, more than like a bike rack?
I don't think we'd use an easement process. I think we would use existing parking spaces that the town owns. That, that would be the suggestion that we would have.
But that would have to be then the limiting factor because you're not gonna use an easement process. You'd have to use parking spaces.
Or sidewalks.
Or sidewalk, yeah, any pub, any public space.
Yes.
Okay.
Or any town-owned parcel.
Yeah.
Okay. And you're comfortable with that?
Yeah, I'm, we're kind of, we're not yet.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, the specific scenario that we had brought to attention that, that made us, uh, recommend against any kind of requirement, uh, in the urban center is similarly to the cars, uh, but obviously at, at less spatial impact. In the urban center, you can build out to all four lot lines and completely, uh, fill the, the parcel. And, um, this would potentially make that not possible anymore. Uh, if, if it's, it has to be outside the structure.
I'm, I'm gonna rephrase my question. As long as you are content with the tools that you have to own bike parking within the urban center, I vote yes. And the answer is you are?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, so do I. Sarah? Okay, Sarah's thumbs up. Great, so when we see this next, it will be, you know, for any of those elements, it will, um, try to look at a real tangible language, you know, up for our, up for our, um, editing, amending, or, you know, ordinating.
I have one bottom-line request related to the whole issue of the citizen initiative for bike regs. I would like to do a post-mortem on this, and if I'm using jargon, please let me know.
A little bit, yeah.
Okay, so I would like to do a review of how this process went down. My, I, I believe actually this started before I joined.
Yeah.
The planning commission.
A couple of the meetings, I think.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and I hope I'm not offending anybody. That's not my intent. My intent is to get, you know, improvements in the process. But we've done, what, five, six meetings or something?
Four, and then this one?
Five, and we just voted to turn it over to staff to create regs. And if that's the right process, super. But I would like to know, for example, how Jonathan is gonna feel, for example, about the fact that he spent all this time doing the research and we basically said, "Thank you, Jonathan. We just turned it over to staff to create the regs." Because clearly, you know, Vermont being the culture it is, citizen initiatives are very important. And also, of course, e- even though I'm a volunteer and you don't have to pay me anything for this, I'd like to believe we want to make our process as efficient as possible. And it just feels, and I admit I come from a manufacturing environment, it just feels like we spent a heck of a lot of time on this to turn it back to staff and say, "Come up with some recommendations and we'll look at them."
Well, we aren't just turning it back to staff and saying, "Come up with recommendations." They have a whole set of recommendations from Local Motion. They have all the discussion that we've already had.
Okay.
That will hopefully, and I think that we've emphasized tonight, that I don't think that we're really expecting earth-shattering changes. We're looking for recommendations and changes that are yay, increased, but not, like I said, not like earth-shattering or anything. And you have all that information to already draw upon, so I would hope that it would mean that you would just go back to that and start picking things out for the most part and seeing what might work here.
And anytime you do a review of the process, it's very possible that the review comes back with, "Well, it worked as well as it could," right? And that's a perfectly fine answer. Um, and I don't, I'm not precluding necessarily. I have my own opinion, but I'm not precluding that the group is gonna consider anything else. I would just ask that we look at this process and say, you know, is there anything we could have done differently to make sure to reach our goals? Quickly reach, you know, a, a solution, and then also obviously create a respectful takeaway for Jonathan.
Was that the person who initially suggested this or something?
Well, B Cat.
Jonathan works with B Cat.
Okay.
Yeah.
They work together. Well, hopefully he'll be happy with this. I mean, we're moving in the right, in the direction that he suggested.
Yeah, I think so, but, you know, we're also not doing this to make him happy.
No.
Um, okay, he's not even a town resident, right? Just lending his expertise and perspective because he's interested in it.
I think it's interesting though, like, because the last two things we've been dealing with, and, and to some extent the next one, because, you know, we've had the design review committee over the years, like speaking on it. We just haven't really had the time to take it up. I mean, having a clear process, I think, does make sense for when advocates bring us something. How are we vetting it? How are we, you know, I think when, I think it was a little bit surprising to Jonathan when staff was like, despite us telling him that, that, no, we don't support this. It set up this weird kind of tension, so.
Yeah, and again, I'm not trying to suggest a, a solution or answer anything, but maybe part of the new process becomes, you know, before a citizen initiative goes to the planning commission, it goes through staff and staff has a chance to work with the, the initiative and/or provide, you know, a rebuttal. I, I don't know, I'm, again, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to fashion a solution here. I'm just saying, it just, my gut says we, we could possibly make improvements to the process.
Yeah, I hear you. I mean, um, I know there's some other bodies, um, you know, like the DRB, that seems like they have a very structured process. Where, you know, there's applications that come in or appeals of the zoning administrators' actions or decisions, and then they have a hearing and, you know, it's a very much more structured thing, but from what I've seen of, you know, planning commissions, it's just largely, you know, discussions. Largely, you know, just discussions and coming up with things and then coming to conclusions and, you know, and different, different, um, different, um, projects or subjects, sometimes it's like staff feels very strongly about something and they, and it seems like, especially like when something is a statutory change, right? Like the state legislature made a statutory change and we have to update our regs to, um, comply. So when we've done that, they, they come with a draft and they propose it to us and basically say, hey, here's the reasoning. Do you have any questions? We have to do this. And then we're like, yeah, looks good. So that's like the exact opposite of this process where it's just so clear and structured and so obvious what we have to do.
Well, I can read the room and clearly there isn't a strong sense that we need to do this, so I'll drop it.
Well, I mean, I, as well, I, you know, I, I, looking back, there was a, maybe a past meeting or two where it's like we could have had, I could have made this memo with a question, maybe a meeting or two sooner.
Of what you're suggesting could be achieved by us just sticking more closely to our agenda. I mean, I've been on some boards and commissions where it's like, "But it's this time, that's it." Like, call the vote, we're moving on. And we don't tend to do that, but we could do that if we don't want things to go from meeting to meeting. We could stick more closely to our agenda. And knowing that we were gonna stick more closely to our times would probably compel us to be more efficient if we knew that.
Certainly, I mean, you know, I'd be, I'm the first one.
I'm all for efficiency, so.
I'm the first one to snicker at the select board, you know, finishing an hour after they're supposed to finish, but that isn't the only, necessarily the only issue, right? Some of it is, hey, let's have people come in prepared with the information that we want from them. Let's have a process that says, okay, this is gonna be the next step. We all know it's the next step. All, all that kind of stuff. And again, I'm not trying to prescribe a solution. I'm just saying, it just, my gut says we could probably learn from this and say, "Could you do something a little bit quicker?"
Yeah.
I think that's fair, and you were asking us at the end of the meeting to put things on the agenda for the future. I would suggest that what he's saying, John, you know, what he's saying could be added to that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm definitely not opposed to it. I thought that, you know, there's been lots of time taken up on some of these topics without resolution. And especially when it's a citizen or an advocate that's bringing it forward. I kind of like the idea of, okay, we have it a month in advance and staff can really think about it and do our research and have a, have another side so that, hopefully that helps the planning commission make those decisions.
Sure, or even better, you two come in as a team, right, and say, "This is our recommendation." Citizen initiative and staff together have decided this is the best solution, then it becomes almost trivial, right? But again, I don't want to prescribe a solution. I just want to suggest it just feels like we could maybe make some improvements to the process.
In some ways, it feels like, for me as chair, I mean, in some sense, there's no, there's no ends to projects and topics that are, you know, that we could do, but at other times, it feels like, you know, a body like the Select Board, like, they've got every town department with ideas proposing things to them and potential motions, and then things at the public and things from the state and all this, and so, they especially, and their meetings already go so long and they meet twice every two weeks or more. It's, for me, it feels like that sort of body very much being like kind of executive in the top body in the town should, um, have things really served up to them, ready to vote yes or no. But for us, it's more, I feel like, you know, it's a kind of an exploratory.
I agree with you on, I agree with you in general sense. The Select Board is to make decisions.
Yep.
We're to do research and create recommendations. Those are two different, those are two different charts. All I'm saying is, let's just make sure we're creating recommendations as quickly as possible, okay, if you will. If you want to think about that analogy, okay.
And with that on my way, the next thing on the agenda? I don't feel the need to discuss it anymore. I'm ready to, to move along.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's just hear from Sarah quickly though, before we move on to that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I agree, you know, I, I appreciate that we can sort of come to these meetings and hear different opinions and sort of ruminate on things, but I, I mean, Tom, I even emailed you when, when you sent out the, the memo you put together and I was like, "Thank you," like, you know, like this is super helpful because I do feel like we have talked about it over and over again, you know, a little different directions or, you know, from, coming from different people, but like, at some point, like, there's other things to get to, and, um, so I think in a timely fashion, if you will, you know, not to squash discussion, but also like just to move things along, because, you know, I think we could talk things to death sometimes if we're not careful. So, yeah, I think putting some, some boundaries around how long things are discussed, um, would be helpful and, hmm, you know, for me personally, make it feel a little more productive, I guess, if that makes sense.
Yeah, very helpful. Thanks, thanks for expressing that. Okay, moving on to the next one, certified local government. This is, I didn't get to it last meeting, so here it is in exactly the same form. Um, staff provided, um, or prepared some documents and a memo. So, um, how about we just start with staff in whichever way they wanna present it to us or summarize it, or just posit the questions to us?
So, um, it seems like there's been agreement that the planning commission, or maybe we need to revisit it, that we want to pursue the certified local government. So what we prepared for you was what we think needs to be done to the zoning bylaw, to change, um, an issue that the state had pointed out to us. And then also a little bit of background on the CLG, just to refresh people's memories, so that maybe you might want to take some action, um, to make a recommendation to the select board. Um, essentially what we view, what needs to be done is first, we need to change our land use regulations and the way that we introduce the historic resource overlay district. Then second, we would have to go to the select board, ask them, we'd make a recommendation to the select board that they appoint a certified local government. And appoint, sorry, that they would appoint a historic preservation commission. And then we would, uh, petition for a certified local government, basically.
And you're comfortable that if we did these things, whoever approves, certified local governments would approve us?
Yes, eventually.
Well, sure.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that. But, by the way, just, just for completeness, what are the risks involved with doing this? I'm assuming nothing is free in the sense that there may be some risks associated with it.
What I view is probably one of the biggest risks is we need to have a historic preservation committee. No less than three, no more than nine committee members. I'm actually concerned, like, are we going to find enough committee members? Because there actually are specialized skills that they need to have. You know, whether it's architect, historic preservation consultants, there's, there's this kind of certain list of, um, professionals that they're looking for to be the stories.
And they're volunteers?
And they're volunteers. They have to meet at least four times a year, is what I said. Was it four times?
But it would replace the design review committee?
It would replace the design review committee, so there are three members.
I suppose it can.
It can.
It can. And maybe that'd be part of our recommendation.
Yeah, just to save lives.
Yeah, but primarily, I mean, the, the good part about it is it gives us resources to do more historic preservation, whether it's adding buildings to the national register, doing surveys, just doing, um, interesting promotional things for the community to promote our his, historic buildings or things like that, so.
Theoretically, the administrative burden of doing it that way could be a bit higher, and so maybe that's a trade-off, but I don't know that that's really all that significant.
So my comment on this is, to the extent that I understand the detail, getting a certified local government certification is worth the risk involved with finding enough commission numbers. So it's a, it's a net benefit and I would vote yes for it. So it's a, it's a net benefit and I would vote yes for it.
As would I. And I support the recommendation from the staff about how to change the regulations. Yeah, that's fine.
I personally, yeah, I would say yes for the first part and as well as the second part. But I wanted to pitch a, changing elements of the wording. But maybe I'll save that for after this vote. So yes for CLG and yes for staff's recommendation on how to address the issue with the HRO language. Sarah, what are your thoughts?
Yep, that all sounds good. I agree. Yes and yes.
So the wording with the HRO language that they propose is that the Historic Resource Overlay District is an overlay district encompassing several areas of important historic and aesthetic character in Brattleboro, covering areas in the historic downtown core, in West Brattleboro Village near the Common, and in the historic residential areas along Canal Street, south of downtown. And that's Clark Canal and Horton Homestead, those two neighborhoods pretty much adjacent to each other. I would actually propose that since our town plan only really has any justification, any substantial justification for preserving, well, this is not phrased correctly. The town plan, in my opinion, justifies having historic preservation of just two of those. The downtown and the West Brattleboro Village. The other two, along Canal Street, it just mentions, it's like, oh, these, these have historic interests. And it says Sweetville and Esteville do as well. It's just like a passing thing. But the downtown and the West Brattleboro Village each have like a paragraph or two saying like, this is really important to the community and it's a central thing. And a plan was done and it was highlighted as the most important aspect of West Brattleboro Village. But there's like no justification for the other two, in my opinion, in my read, so. And I live in one of those neighborhoods full disclosure. But other people do too, and maybe I'm representing their opinion.
So are you, are, do you believe then the fact that there is a dichotomy between the two that are fully justified? And if you will, the two that are not fully explained? That is an obstacle to approving the CLG?
No, I don't think it's an obstacle at all. I'm just saying that since we're looking at the wording now, I'm proposing that because it's related.
I move that we agree to this item and we also add another, if you will, an agenda item or list item that says we need additional clarification on the two neighborhoods that are ambiguously defined. Is that the right word? Poorly defined?
Sure.
Is that, does that meet your needs?
I'll second the motion so we can discuss it.
Well, I want to make sure.
Insufficiently defined?
What's that?
That's a perspective.
But I mean, the, the general intent of it meets your needs. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Somebody, oh, and you second it?
Sure.
Okay, me too.
Yes.
Yes. Sarah?
Okay. Ba-da-bing, ba-da-boom.
Oh, should we vote? Oh, yeah.
That was a good.
Okay, sorry. My head was down and then I saw Sarah. Okay, so I just want to be clear. I like the idea there's going to be a separate meeting.
Well, so there's two issues coming out of this, right? One is, we approve the recommendation. The second is that we're asking for additional clarification or detailed, whatever terms you're comfortable with, you think are appropriate in regards to the two areas that you mentioned. Which I'll, I think you should define because I certainly don't know it.
Yeah, I get it. I think we can discuss the issues and.
I'm confused myself as to what's poorly defined about them, if that's the way that the motion's being made. Because they've been exactly defined since the 90s, I think.
Well, not the bounds, not the bounds of the districts, right? But just.
The justification for them being in.
Yeah.
Well, I have to tell you the truth and you should be talking to them because I'm just trying to make sure you're comfortable with it. I don't understand the issues.
Well, they were, they were in the HRO because they were part of the National Historic Register. And that's how the HRO is defined, more or less. But I'm saying that especially since we're untying the, like, the definition as being just simply part of the NHRP, whatever, that since that's not the reason that things become part of the HRO anymore if we're voting this way, then, then what justification remains for them being there? And I feel like in the town plan, the west, the downtown, yeah. I don't know how to.
I understand. I, so.
And I don't know if staff is gonna argue it one way or the other, but I guess you're gonna come back with whatever background and justification.
I think this would require at least one public hearing for a change that significant in regulatory effect.
Well, it all has to, it all needs a public hearing anyway.
Sure. I mean, in terms of the difference between just defining the, if it was basically to make the, what we thought was the status quo more clear, which was sort of the language that was proposed, versus making a substantial change to what actually does, in effect, remain part of the HRO.
It all needs a public hearing.
Including all the other topics.
I mean, this is more like, we're saying, yes, we like this language better. In our next round of zoning amendments, we're gonna include it. And then we'll have a public hearing. You're suggesting a different public hearing?
It seems substantial enough that if we were going to open up that level of discussion, that it needs a longer public process.
We can, we can get it out there.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
But you have what you need from us for this certified, and we don't have to talk about this anymore, right?
Lindsay doesn't want to talk about that.
This has been very, this is very confusing. I did not enjoy this discussion. It was very confusing. And I just want to give the nice people on the design review committee or whatever what they want and give you what you want. And I would like to move on from it.
CLG is settled.
Yeah.
Actually, no, there's a little bit more. There's the, there's the bylaw or the ordinance that the town, the select board would end up passing.
That's the select board.
But that's the select.
But that's the CLG is settled.
But I'd like to, oh, sorry. Well, it's about the CLG. Oh, that's about, that's the ordinance for establishing a historic preservation commission. Yeah, okay, so CLG is settled. But the ordinance, I mean, I feel like since we're kind of initiating this topic, even though the select board is going to be the ones approving the ordinance, there's options in the ordinance for what can be elements of the ordinance.
Of this historic preservation.
Of the powers and responsibilities.
We're not discussing that tonight, right? Are we gonna discuss that at a future meeting or are we doing that now?
I'd like to move that we move that to a future meeting because I think that's gonna be a bigger discussion. What falls under the historic preservation.
I mean, I think it's a matter of if it's been read and you guys know what I'm talking about or not right now. Because there's, the powers are already, you know, spelled out and there, most of them, several of them or five of them are just, they have to be in the ordinance. But then there's a following three which are optional. And so, like, for example, one of them is, if provided in the bylaw, advising and assisting the legislative body, appropriate municipal panel, an administrative officer in creating and administering a design review district or downtown or village center district pursuant to blah, blah, blah. Because of our previous talk a few months ago about the differences between design review districts and local historic districts and historic resource overlays, I feel like, not that we took a vote on it, but that the design review district just came with a whole bunch of negatives and drawbacks. And the overlay district had all the benefits without any of the drawbacks. So why would we recommend, or we should recommend in the ordinance, that the historic preservation committee not even have the power to recommend historic or design review districts? Because that's just gonna lead to, like, we've already looked at it and viewed that, and I think, come up with the opinion that that's just, the overlay district's fine. That's enough. That's, that's a mechanism that works. So why, why have this body that can do something that's just not, not good?
I get it.
Yeah. So we could preempt that by just recommending that they don't even have that power. They can still recommend overlay districts, overlay districts, so.
I found the entire discussion very confusing about those diff, I really tried to follow.
Well, you have to be the chairperson to actually put in enough effort, you know, to try to figure this out.
I did not follow. So I'm really just happy to go along with whatever recommendations people think are best. I don't think I'm really gonna understand it because I'm not sure that I, I totally want to.
Tom, I'm, and we keep it the way it is. So in that list of three things, three additional things, we would want it to be advising the DRB or administrative officer and administrative officer in development review and enforcement pursuant. Because then we keep our overlay district.
You'd want that one.
I think that sounds great.
That's the one I would want.
Oh, I agree. That's what I, I think, I think the first and the, and the third of the three aren't worthwhile. But the second one is.
I think that we should avoid anything that complicates it. And it sounds, from what you're saying, like that would complicate it, so.
I think that's the one that keeps it close to our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So then we'd move, if commissioners understand that enough and or feel, then what we would do is move forward recommending to the select board the example ordinance for establishing a historic preservation committee, but striking the first and third optional responsibilities. Or recommending that they strike the first and third for the reasons given, just.
I so moved.
Oh, yeah, I'm okay with that. I thought that whole discussion about the three different overlays was certainly interesting, but it wasn't really relevant to what we wanted, which was the CLG. I'm perfectly okay with sticking with the historic resource overlay.
Is that a second?
What's that?
Is that a second?
Oh, I didn't even remember you were voting down. Second.
All right. All those in favor? There's some more discussion. Yeah, that's all four of us. Okay, moving on to any topic or discussion about new business slash agenda suggestions for future meetings, next meetings. We haven't had this in a while because agendas have been full with other things. But I think it's good to have this on every so often, just to have a, not that commissioners can't talk about things, you know, call me up or email me or staff as well, but here's a formal time to chat about it.
I have one, but it's a little bit longer than I want to do this, so I'll wait till the end. Let others have their.
I just want to see more discussion about how we can approve the regulations so that we can encourage housing in all its many myriad forms and whatever capacity is necessary to get people out of the weather.
When did you join? Remind me.
July? Last, sometime last summer, I think. I think it was July. Yeah.
And I'm not, I don't mean to imply that like our housing, our previous revision of the regs and the Housing Action Plan did 100% everything that's possible or feasible. But, you know, we spent some time on it, substantial time.
Want to find places that haven't done anything yet.
So I think, I think it might, I think it's outside of the regulation.
The service center.
Well, this might tie, yeah. I mean, this, this could tie into the town plan and the Putney Road area and kind of your email that you had sent with that article. I think maybe outside of the regulation, there is more that we could be doing on housing. Staff could definitely use the added capacity to be investigating some of, you know, the more innovative approaches to housing, so.
That's the kind of.
I think the zoning, like the, the regulations, yeah, for now.
Yeah. Well, that's the type of thing that I'm willing to help with, is, is working on that. Yeah.
Admittedly, I personally.
I know there aren't very many of you. I know there's only so many hours in the day.
And I'll admit, that reminds me, you said that there's more we can do than the regs. I'm a bit of a reg-focused brain in some ways. So I know that there's other, and there's other things that the planning commission can do than just the town plan document and the regs, although those are very powerful, you know, things within our realm. There's other, there's other things.
Well, I would say that specifically within the regs, and actually, this is a, the first question I have is, do we have a printer that, that prints our land use regulations? That like already has the file that I can go to to purchase a copy?
Do you have a copy?
Oh, I don't have a copy now.
Okay. Anybody would like, anybody in the planning commission who wants a copy?
I'd love a copy. Thank you.
Get you one on my way out.
Because my.
I'm just gonna get you one.
My second suggestion for a topic more related to the land use regulations might be solved by me actually having a book in front of me instead of always looking on my computer and scanning through. But it relates to the SROs, single resident occupancies. I don't know which districts those are allowed in or not allowed in. But that's something that I would be interested in looking into and seeing whether there's any possibility for intervention, change.
We could walk you through it too in the uptime. I mean, we loosened up a lot of that with the amendments that were passed this summer.
And SROs fit under the.
Other specialized.
Other specialized residential structures. When you look in the use tables, you'll never actually see SRO listed anywhere. And I thought that was, that's.
Yes, I think I had to ask at one point where they were because I couldn't find them in there. Yeah.
Sarah, do you have any thoughts right now?
No, nothing off the top of my head. I was kind of, obviously I saw it on the agenda and I was like, oh, we actually have time to talk about things we haven't talked about yet. So, but I didn't, I hadn't come up with anything.
So there's kind of a running list. Maybe it was almost a year ago, we talked about having a running list of like agenda topics. And so I put one on the Google Drive, which now we're kind of getting away from because of the new website. But on the Google Drive folder at the very, well, it depends if you have things in alphabetical order or not. But at the very bottom, there's a document that has kind of a running list to the best of my memory. When people break something up, I put it, I put it there on the list. Yeah. And so at next meeting, Sue, maybe you can speak to, with the DBA and Kate Traskis maybe coming in?
Yeah, so Kate Traskis, who's the executive director of Downtown Brattleboro Alliance, is gonna come and speak about their economic development efforts. And they have a new tool that, you know, she'll have some data probably about visits to, she'll focus on downtown, but she's got the ability to kind of look at it throughout the other retail areas of town. But, you know, trip generation, where people are shopping, where they're leaving Brattleboro, where we're leaking retail. And just some of their, their other efforts to, to survey downtown. Both consumer surveys, but also like building surveys of space and what's in the buildings, not, what's vacant, what's size and, you know, does it have bathrooms, does it be code, that kind of stuff. So Kate will come in April.
With, when Kate, I mean, maybe, I assume this would be sort of in her wheelhouse. But, and I don't know if it's really in our wheelhouse per se, but there's definitely an alarming amount of storefronts downtown that are opening up or not opening up, becoming vacant. So I'm wondering, and maybe that's something she could just touch on if there's like understanding, like, what the trend is and like why it's happening. And I don't know if there's anything the planning commission can do to help fill spaces or whatever. But yeah, it's a little concerning.
Yeah, and I know she thinks, she feels the same way. And so one of the things she'll also be able to talk about is this part-time economic development coordinator position that they'll be hiring to kind of focus on the retail areas of downtown, but also other commercial retail areas.
I'm smiling because I'm thinking about my own personal experience trying to rent one of those downtown spaces. And a lot of people do not return calls and they are not particularly creative in their negotiating. It doesn't surprise me that we have open storefronts. But my impression is, is that a lot of them are on the verge of being filled. I was actually kind of hopeful about it, so I hope that maybe she'll have some good news for us.
Another thing, Sue or Steve or maybe both of you that you suggested a while back, if we were to pursue or want to pursue moving forward with the downtown district being, for bike parking, being the purview and responsibility of the town government, that which we just all agreed we want, we want to see, that, that we could actually, you know, be involved and figure out how to. that that we could actually, you know, be involved and figure out how to assess the downtown and survey it and filter out and decide what's, what would be needed. And, you know, recommend to the town departments or the select board or both what, you know, what to, what to install and. So that could be something too, you know, a follow-up of what we just decided. John?
I was just gonna say, so it was, it was interesting that at the beginning of the meeting that you mentioned that next year, you know, town plan has to be reviewed because what I was going to, I think the dates are flexible about that. But what I was going to suggest, not as an addendum item, but as a process was that we spend this year, I mean, we start immediately internally within the planning commission, developing the process and the background for an effective town plan discussion. I I think, I think at a personal level, I'm really excited about the fact we own this and we can actually proactively go out and create something rather than responding to or reacting to, you know, amendment coming in or something like that. And in fact, I had written a couple of notes, you know, we could, for example, before we even take it out for public review and public input and all the rest, the planning commission could work on the as-is. What's the current plan, understanding that, you know? What are the best practice plans from other towns? Because I've heard from people that there are some very good town plan formats out there that we might want to look at and potentially, you know, modify ours to include the best parts of those, right? And then also taking data like the data from DBA, like demographic data and other data is to understand what the current situation is because the town plan, of course, is 10 to 13 years old and may not reflect our current data, right? So that kind of stuff could easily fill, you know, a portion of an agenda for multiple agendas and give us a full background, in my opinion, for then coming out and creating, you know, the right questions, the the questions about gaps, you know, the questions about what do you see, and I'm talking now when I say to them, the community, what do you see as the should-be's, right? The the vision of what you want. And then what are the gaps with the plan today? And, you know, how would you address them? How would you prioritize them and all the rest? And all that stuff, in my opinion, could be done within the planning commission, bringing in people perhaps like, you know, DBA and all the rest. And then be ready as the clock officially starts ticking, if you will, to take that out to community review, community input, you know, community feedback and all the rest. And and I think for me personally, and hopefully for the rest of the planning commissioners, that would be a very satisfying, that's very satisfying work because that's, to me, critical, important to the town, right? I mean, the town plan should be theoretically the sort of visionary document that we work off of. And whether it is or not really isn't the argument I'm making tonight, but it's just that it should be and possibly could be that document, right?
Could be.
And I'd love to see us start adding those kinds of items to the agenda on a regular basis under the broad framework of here's the process we all agreed to up, up the start. And, you know, this, tonight, this agenda is going to be this piece of it. And then we know the next night is going to be, the next night being the next meeting is going to be the next agenda. I mean, if you think about it, 2024 is only nine more meetings. Eight maybe, right? That'll pass thoroughly before we know it. So I think getting started now is, is a, is a the right thing to do in terms of building the background data to be really effective when we take it out to the community. And I'd like to see us start doing that, start putting that on the. And and I'm more than willing to sign up because I know, you know, y'all, I'm retired, y'all have jobs, you have other lives, right? I'm more than happy to be a point person to help, you know, put the extra work in outside the meeting to facilitate the communication between the planning commission and staff.
Great. Yeah, that'd be great.
I'm not even really asking for a vote, to be honest, because it's our charter anyway. It's just, you know.
Yeah, and another element that made me think of is maybe that you didn't say is a review of the past couple or few times that the town plan in Brattleboro has been revised.
Yeah, absolutely.
Lessons and maybe some of that we can just copy and instead of just, whatever that phrase is, creating the, reinventing the wheel.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. And I mean, some of these things are going to fall out that we talked about. For example, you know, this neighborhood center conversation we had, that's going to fall out in the town plan. We're either going to say, listen, we want to keep the neighborhood centers that we have today or, you know, it never turned out to really change. And so we probably need to have the zoning reflect the actual state of being. And I'm not, again, not prescribing a solution, I'm just saying, these are questions that will naturally fall out as a result of that analysis. So with your blessing, Commission, I will go ahead and get started doing that and pulling together, you know, working with staff and pulling together data, presenting it, regular agenda items and all the rest, including the other commissioners, obviously, and getting feedback and all the rest.
Sue, does that fit with, if you can remind us with the timeline of the due date? And and when, at least typically, not that we have to do it the typical or past ways, but when, how much in advance of the deadline, we typically, the commission typically starts working on it?
So I've only been involved with one town plan, real, like a big rewrite. And that was when I started and it had probably been going on for a couple of months. It probably took longer than it needed to, but it was probably at least two years.
Two years.
But it was a wholesale like rewrite, which I'm not saying this, this might be, might not be. It might be slimmed down. It might be, obviously, all the background data, like John was saying, that all needs to be reviewed because it's 10 years later. So, yeah, I mean, probably a good two-year process. But we had a certain, we did it with a town plan advisory group and we met monthly with them. I'm not necessarily recommending the planning to just, to determine, you know, how to, how we best want to do that, but.
But do you recall when the deadline is?
So the plan will expire in May of 2026. And it's a good three months to get it adopted because the lead times for warnings is long.
So we're really only talking about a year and a half if we're gonna.
Yeah.
I I think a year and a half will come on us. Given that we have, what we have to do to have legitimate town plan in terms of taking out to the communities, listening feedback, revising it based on the feedback, throwing it out again.
Yeah.
I I think it'll be honest before we know it. I would just like to say we could get started now and do a heck of a lot of work within our commission, which is our job.
Well, I I love the idea. I mean, you have great ideas and enthusiasm and you're volunteering to be the the chair on this topic, simply speak, and I love that.
Okay, well, great.
I personally support it. And like you said, we don't have to vote on it necessarily, or maybe we should. Kind of like appointing John as the the lead commissioner for spearheading our, our work on the, on reviewing the town plan. That's the motion.
So I can't get a rate for it.
All in favor?
Sounds great.
Did you have to vote for that, actually?
Yeah, well, I didn't, I didn't want a second. I thought that'd be a little tacky, but definitely.
You did for your end up, okay. Yeah, so we have four, four for that. Great. Okay.
Okay, good. I'm, I'm, I will bring back some stuff. We'll talk offline and I'll set up some agenda items and we'll talk about, you know, the big process and then split it out and get feedback and work from there. Fantastic.
I will say, as we go into this town plan process, because we have at least three or four other plans or documents to work on, you know, talking housing action plan, walk-by, not that some of them might not need some updating. I think we're going into it with a lot more information than that we had 10 years ago.
Well, good. The town plan can expand from 300 to 400 pages.
No, once you shrink it.
Okay, good, good. Make it more approachable.
Just an executive summary.
And just a, a quick question in regards to something you mentioned. You know, we've talked, when I've come over informally, about things like STRs and punitive taxes for undeveloped land, unactivated land, I guess is the euphemism for it. Have those been discussed in a holistic picture in terms of increasing housing stock? Because I don't want to reinvent the wheel, but if those haven't been discussed in a whole, if we just sort of like, okay, well, we need to build, you know, mid, mid-level housing or something like that, there might be some value in looking at the housing picture holistically. In other words, we just want more units. Let's figure out the different ways we can get more units.
So we did look at short-term rentals. I'll share the memo with you. You know, we decided not to regulate above and beyond what the department is already saying. We don't have a lot of short-term rentals in Brattleboro and they kind of, we had a planning commissioner at the time who had experience with them out in Oregon and just, I think she was pretty convincing that people get into short-term rentals for various reasons. One of which might be they're trying to finance their own homes. So for a short period of time, they need to do short-term rental. And so we wanted to keep it flexible for people's lifestyles and life cycles. But also knowing that we're not Dover or Wilmington, we don't have the issues that they have.
Yeah, the numbers were pretty stark. I mean, we were, we were not like a player.
Yeah, they're around 80 and that's for the zip code 05301, which includes other towns.
And I want to be really clear because I know that STRs are a hot button. It's not so much that I'm recommending, again, a specific solution. What I'm recommending as a process is, is that we go beyond how can we build better, more houses, if you will, to can we use, what would we call you, legal remedies to increase the effective housing stock? Because I I'm sure there's, everybody's struggling right now with housing stock. And I'm sure there's some creative communities out there that are looking at some innovative ideas in terms of, you know, how do we get more people roofs over their heads? And I I'm not an expert, so I couldn't, couldn't tell you anything that other than STR, which is an obvious one, right? But have we had that discussion? Because I don't want to ask for that discussion again if we've had it already. But if it's just been a piece of it, then there might be value in looking at the bigger picture.
Well, we have the Housing Action Plan, right?
Yeah.
That's pretty holistic. It's a good read. I recommend it.
I will.
Yeah, yeah. I I was impressed by the breadth of information. And since then, you've done, what, two updates to the select board? So there, I would, I mean, that strikes me as something that was holistic about housing.
Then then I'm good, actually. I I'm not going to to suggest that we have a meeting over this. If we have a plan already, then I'll read it and we'll go from there.
But I do think in terms of, you know, thinking outside the box, Lindsay has lots of ideas. I think Steve and Brian.
I just like boxes, circles.
So, you know, I think.
If it's out there, I'm suggesting.
Well, or even, again, and I don't know if this is possible, but again, there's a lot of people out there that have gone through this, bringing in some people that have gone through this to provide us their knowledge and expertise, right? Tips and tips and techniques, if you will.
Yeah, I I mean, I think one of the biggest barriers still is getting it to pencil in Vermont, getting development to pencil out. So the state has a bunch of new housing funding sources and I think that's helpful, but, you know.
Well, that was my sense too. I mean, for 250 and a whole bunch of other reasons, right? It can be a long, tedious, miserable process. But then that also, and, you know, please stop me, I don't want to run the meeting over just because I'm now I'm, I personally consider that I'm sort of BSing with everybody, but, I mean, but that also sort of then lends us to, rather than build new, let's see if we can open up old.
So to your first, the other part about vacant buildings, the select board is having some conversations about that that we are involved with.
Okay.
Yeah, wasn't there an article in the newspaper or something about that a little while ago?
Yeah.
I remember mentioning friendlies getting stuck out.
You may have also said vacant lands. I think I heard the word land.
Well, I, I know, again, my, my knowledge is limited, but I know some communities have used punitive taxing to motivate landowners who are keeping their property empty to actually build something on it and activate it.
And we've already done the carrot by increasing the densities, so that would be the stick.
But regarding.
I'm, I'm not opposed to using a stick because, again, we need to put roofs over people's heads.
Steve's done some research into that.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've, we've been looking into it and certainly that's a, it's a good idea. I'm of that opinion at this point, although we have to call it a fee instead of a tax for now.
We're also looking, the select board, the select board will be looking at the town-owned lands and doing some pre-development.
Obviously, another option as well.
We've been having those conversations with the select board.
Do you guys use giblets here? Uh, you give tax abatements for a certain period of years for people that do development?
We have not.
I proposed it at RTM, but the majority voted against it. Phoenix, man, they sold everything downtown for like six, 10 years of tax payment.
So the state of, we're Dillon's rural state, so we can only do what we're empowered to do? And presidential tax stabilization is not one of those things. Commercial and industrial.
Okay. The charter review is ongoing, so I guess, I don't know how, how crystallized that is at this point. But if you were to suggest it to them as a potential addition to the town charter, it's possible that the state legislature could approve giving us that specific power.
Really? Okay. Giblet, giblets really drove development down.
Giblet?
I don't know what that's called.
It's an acronym.
It's an acronym for something. It's essentially a tax payment for a certain amount, number of years.
Yeah.
Property tax payment. It it makes the numbers pencil better, really, is the bottom line, right?
After I proposed something that sounds very similar to that at RTM, granted, when an RTM member just proposes something, it's just like an advisory thing and it's not a binding, binding decision, even if people go in favor of it. But it kind of caught a lot of people off guard because like I didn't go around and like talk with everyone for like the weeks or months leading up to it. It was like my vote was, let's, let's vote to recommend that the select board and town staff look at this and and put it, maybe put it on the agenda next year. I wanted them to do the work of looking into it. I'm just one person. But I was like, does this look compelling enough? Here's the language of the statute. And like, and so there's like 30, maybe 40% of people voted in favor, but 60 voted against. And some people spoke with me after and like, oh, you know, once I heard like one person who represents this kind of group of people speak out against it, then I couldn't. And, you know, I I recommend bringing it back again, but talking with a lot of people first.
Oh, yeah, because there's a lot of wanting dynamics.
So it's potential that, potential that, you know, we could look at that one and actually come with it with an official recommendation instead of just mine.
So all I'm saying is a couple of examples I know I'm throwing out is, you know, process-related more than specific solutions.
Yeah. Yes, Sarah?
Um, two things. I'm going to be attending the Homes For All Summit on the 14th that the state's putting on, so I can sort of just, hearing this discussion, maybe bring back any sort of interesting case studies or whatnot.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah. So I don't know, Sue or Steve, if you guys are going as well?
No, it was sold out when I tried to get tickets.
Yeah, they, I think.
They need to do it in more parts of the state, if you ask me.
Yeah, I think they, I was talking with Amy at the state and they have like 200 people plus a waitlist.
Yeah, or at least video it. I mean.
Yeah. She suggested doing a follow-up event in Rockingham.
That'd be great.
So I was like, yes, please. And also on that note, with the, the grassroots group that I work with in Rockingham, we gave a proposal to the Bellas Falls Village Trustees for 150,000 of ARPA funding to support lot development for infill housing, which was approved. So we're def, we're working on putting together sort of how that will flush out. But essentially, it's $150,000 of ARPA funds to support, to provide grants of up to $25,000 per lot for six vacant or underutilized lots. So it's still sort of in the, the beginning phases, but I'm really interested to sort of see how that flushes out. I imagine I'll have some hand in helping administer it at some level, but happy to like report back on how that.
I might reach out to you, Sarah. So our select board is part of our, the ARPA discussions here in Brattleboro. One of the highest vote getters was to establish a fund for, to help with the creation of affordable and middle-income housing. And so they didn't end up taking it out of the ARPA funds. They're likely going to take it out of the revolving loan funds and set up a $250,000 fund. So I need to be preparing some recommendations of how that could be used. And then the other thing is they've set aside, probably it'll come from the RLF 60,000 to do pre-development on some town-owned sites so that, to then, you know, however it's going to work, you know, do some of the upfront work for developers.
So could we get Sarah, before, before we lose this, could we get Sarah on the agenda to, to discuss the interesting ideas, for want of a better word, from this conference that she's going to? When you get done with it?
If she's willing.
When you get done with it, if she's willing.
Sure. It'll be, so it's the 14th, so it could be the April meeting, if there's room.
By the way, again, just BSing, how are, how's the ADU stuff progressing? Have we made any progress on convincing people that they wanted to use it in Rhode Island?
Can I mention something related to that, which also goes to what the two of you were saying? One of the things that should be considered when any of these grants are being proposed is the vast number of Vermonters who are self-employed and get health insurance from the marketplace, for whom getting a grant counts as income and can like totally change your healthcare costs. Because we were going to do an ADU at our house and it couldn't really pencil out because the unknowns of that. So it's just something to keep in mind, if Brattleboro, Rockingham, wherever does this kind of stuff. It's offering people a type of assistance that they can actually use and that, and thinking about how you can help them figure out whether it's going to financially impact them. Because I had lengthy discussions with the folks around here who do the ADU grants and even on up to the state level.
So like ADU counts as ordinary income?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Oh, that shoots yourself in the foot.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
I mean, in Vermont, like, that's a lot of people who are self-employed. I mean, if you have a business, it's a totally different situation to get a grant like that, or if you're working for someone. But like, yeah, that was a major stumbling block for us. I mean, in addition to the horrific costs of building it, that was the biggest stumbling block. Something to keep in mind from my personal experience, it was a bummer.
We have seen pretty good uptake though.
Yeah, and I mean, the list keeps growing, so there are definitely people who are doing it, which is good.
I recently heard numbers and I don't have them in front of me, but I think that there were somewhere around 42 units. Not just the accessory dwelling unit, it was the accessory dwelling unit and the housing.
That's been empty.
Yeah, creation of new housing. There was something like 42 units in Brattleboro and maybe 60 something in the county, so.
Every room is a step ahead, right?
Correct. Yeah. I mostly say the thing too about the grants, because I think there are people who are very willing and who want to be involved in this, but their own financial situation might prevent them from partaking in it and they might be benefited by it.
If it comes off as a no-interest loan?
Well, maybe that's.
Is that the way around?
I don't know. Like there's, or maybe it's one of those things where it's like, you know, loan forgiveness later on down the line or something. But I think we need to think more creatively because I think there are a lot of people who could do that, but when it comes to the taxes, it ends up being an issue.
No, it's just going to make the penciling worse.
Yeah, it just, yeah, it was a bummer.
Makes me wonder if we could give building materials as a grant.
Yeah, just like, you know, like Sue was saying, I'm thinking outside the box, so, yeah, whatever we can do to make it. You know, there are definitely, I'm sure there are ways. Rich people figure out ways about these things all the time. I'm sure we can be creative and lethal.
Pretty good discussion about potential.
That's a pretty successful discussion, in my opinion. I mean, I learned a ton, as well as getting good information out, so.
Well, okay, let's move on to the required, but also welcomed, public comment period. Seeing no members of the public, the public comment period is closed. We finished our business, so we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Hi, Sarah.
Have a good night.
Bye.